Hello, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the table outside as well as on our website. There is an automatic external defibrillator that is also available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, December 5th, 2023. And Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, December 19th, 2023, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax roll or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, our citizen comments. Anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning. Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I want to compliment you on your efficiency. It's only about three minutes after. Last week, I was just five minutes late. My gosh, I hadn't even sat down and citizen's comments for the Board of Commissioners was already over. You were so efficient last week that you got through the Board of Equalization real fast. And I missed the comments there. While I was sitting down, I missed your comments about citizen's comments for the Commissioners' meeting. So I got gypped a little bit last week. This week, you know, we used to have a media in Omaha that would report on taxes and overtaxing of citizens, particularly with property taxes. I'm going to submit to you a series of world herald articles that we don't see anymore. We don't even hear about it in the radio, about property taxes and how high they are. I can't read them all, but new property valuations are a welcome break for many, but not most. Protest dropped them radically after a tumultus 2017. Thousands in northeast Omaha can expect an extra tax bill. Couple of citizens' comments about the drastic rise in home valuations. Yeah, he was not very happy. Another one about the valuation process being invalid. And area home prices have bounced back up in a big way. That's as early as 2019. And thousands of homeowners in areas from North Hope to Douglas County suburbs are in line for big prices. The gist of those articles is that you're using the home sale price of most recent sales in our neighborhoods to value our property tax. And, you know, I'd like to make a suggestion that maybe you do a special assessment on the homeowner that sold the house. For instance, in the last few years, the exorbitant prices that even outside companies, outside real estate companies paid for houses in Omaha. You base my valuation on that if it was one of the homes sold in my neighborhood by them and they flipped them for a profit one way or another. So maybe you should do a special assessment on the homeowner that sold that house at that price. But that wouldn't be fair either. So maybe you should maybe have a special law or home rule charter, whatever you want to call it, that outside investors cannot come in and drive up my property tax based on the exorbitant price they paid for a house and then they sold it to somebody else or walked away from it or whatever. So those are my comments for today. I'd like to hear some of that reported anymore, but we don't have the media that we used to have. We have lots of citizen newspapers now, street newspapers that report on these things. Most of them are defunct now, so we're left with what are called, they call themselves the Documenters. And they had a big yellow ad in the Reader Magazine that used to get information about all this from you guys that we don't get and reported on it, but they're defunct now, too. So there's probably a few of these private citizen street reporters here today listening. Maybe they'll report on a property tax. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolutions. Resolutions D through K. Please note that Items F and G have been stricken. Is there a motion to approve resolutions minus F and G? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, our protests. The first one is a protest of CAC 23445. The background on this is a permissive exemption for 2023 was not filed for 2414 East Street owned by Grace United Methodist Church. And Mr. Goodwilly is here this morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor/Register of Deeds Office. Actually, L, M, N, and O are remarkably similar. You have two different organizations, each of whom owns two parcels of real property. State law requires charitable religious or educational organizations to file an exemption application in years divisible by four. If they qualify and are approved, they maintain that exemption in the intervening years if and only if they file what's called a reaffirmation. Essentially, it's a statement that says, hey, we're doing the same stuff with the property that enabled us to get the exemption in the first place. 23 was one of those years. Neither of these organizations filed that reaffirmation. Our standard practice is to send four different reminders to folks as the year wears along and you get close to the time in which they run out of time. You can file timely by the 31st of December. There's a late filing window to June 30th. There's a penalty. And so we send reminders in November, December, March, and at the end of May. We got no response to any of them. When that happens, the law requires us to put value on a property because the exemption has gone away. We did that at an earlier board meeting. The organizations have protested that value because they got a notice from the clerk's office that value had been added. I'm going to add that the clerk sent those notices to the same address that we send our reminders. So I have no idea why they look at some and don't look at the others. So where we're at is we put value on these parcels based on the appropriate models for each of the type of property it was that we were using to value properties for 23. I would make one other note for Item L. That parcel was not completely exempt. In prior years, it has been partially exempt because there's a single-family dwelling that has been leased out to a private law firm. And I think the value for 23, 22 for that building was 96.5. So regardless of what you do, that status hasn't changed. That house, from what I understand, is still being leased out to a private entity. And with that, I'm sure the organizations would like to speak.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone here wishing to speak? And just for the record, both of these parcels have been exempt forever in previous years, correct?
Well, L has been, has been a partial for a long time, but yes, otherwise.
Otherwise, they've been exempt.
Yes.
Right. Correct. Thank you.
Grace has a little bit of a spotty history of timely filing, but yes, they've been exempt.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'm William Adie, or Bill. Just state your name and address. I actually live down in Bellevue, but I go to Grace.
That's all right. You know, that's all right. Just your names.
I go to Grace United Methodist Church. I've been a member there for over 30 years. When I started going, the congregation size was probably around 75 or so people. Okay? We're currently down to seven. Okay? Our pastor is provided by the Methodist Conference, and he is in the process of building a congregation for Hispanics. Okay? Because you realize South Omaha is heavily Hispanic. So he is building a congregation that will eventually take over Grace United Methodist Church. And at least that's our hope. Okay? As to the, I spoke with Mr. Goodwilly, and he's correct. You know, I'm sure that there were plenty of notices sent. We have not had a church secretary or anybody, you know, monitoring paperwork and stuff and keeping things organized. So things frequently fall through the crack. And this has happened this year, and we did not, you know, get the timely filing or filing at all for the tax exemption for, you know, religious. And what we, yeah, what wound up getting our attention was a piece of certified mail that got sent to us that said, you know, you've got this. And, okay, looked into it and found, figured out what it, you know, had not been, I called Mr. Goodwilly, and, you know, he explained the situation, and he explained that, you know, the way things stood, the last thing we could do was appeal here to the Board of Equalization. And so that's what we've done. And I, we put a letter in, and I assume that you probably have a copy of it that you've read, which basically is saying what I've said here. As far as, you know, the actual, you know, monetary values that they've placed on there, on the, you know, the church building and stuff, I, I have no way, I mean, he apparently, he said something about some model. I don't know what the model looks like, but I'm assuming it, you know, has some way of, you know, calculating, you know, what the, what they figure the property should be assessed at. So the one thing, when I looked at the assessed values, like I said, I don't have any idea on the valuation of the church. But the other, the one that concerns me, as far as the actual valuation numbers, I mean, we keep, we basically, I don't know how we're going to afford any of this.
One minute.
But the lot across the street that has a community garden and a parking lot on it, I believe that's valued at $288,000. The property, the land value is listed at 88,000, and it seems, that seems on a per-square-foot basis, a couple dollars a square foot, more than the other properties in the area. And I don't know whether it's my math or what, but that seemed out. And then 200 and some odd thousand dollars assessment for the paving and the garden part also seems.
Time. Thank you very much for that explanation. We do have a light. Commissioner Garcia.
A quick question for Mr. Goodwilly. Have they turned in their reaffirmation form since all this has occurred?
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Have they turned in the reaffirmation form at this point or still not yet?
We haven't seen, we haven't seen anything. And the drop, for 23, the drop dead window for that was the 30th of June. I certainly hope these folks, if they continue to operate as a church, they at least get us the stuff in for 24.
Yeah. And we have had, you know, cases where churches and other entities have administrative issues and they miss these notices. And, you know, on occasion, we, we grant these exceptions. But, you know, as Mr. Goodwilly mentioned, there are laws we're supposed to be following that makes it difficult to, you know, have to go back and do these things. So I know it's, you know, coming from somebody who has worked in small nonprofits and even in the ministry myself, I know it can be difficult when you're working with such a small team of leadership and, and people in the congregation. But at the same time, you know, I would ask that you ensure that this is not missed in the future and that such things are prioritized. So with that being said, I would move to grant the exemption being requested, or rather, for 23, for the property on 2414 East Street minus the rental property, and also grant it for 3938 South 25th Street with the contingency that they turn in the reaffirmation form and with the notice that they'll, they will pursue these things in the future to get done.
Yeah, we're working on the one for 24.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hey, Mike, can I, a quick question?
Absolutely.
For, I know we're not talking about M, N, and O right now, technically, but L, M, N, and O, was it your recommenda, I mean, you've, you've been in discussion with all of these folks in the room to deal with this issue. Was your recommendation for them to come here, just so I'm clear, to come here and say, look, your last option is to go to the Board of Equalization to talk to them about the situation? I mean, is that fair?
Well, yes, 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 yes and no.
Okay.
Technically speaking, the exemption busts sales.
Right.
When June 30 comes and goes.
Right.
But property owners have the right to protest a value put on their property here at a, when we do a correction and the county board approves it. So they still had time in the protest window when, I haven't talked to the, the electrical workers. They've not contacted me. Mr. Addy, on behalf of Grace, contacted me. And they still had some time in their protest window. I said, technically speaking, you're really just talking about the value, but you do have the right to protest. And so that's why we're here.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
And I suspect that the notice the clerk sent out to each of these organizations for each of these parcels, after the meeting at which you set value, probably had a paragraph that says you have the right to protest this value within 30 days. Dan and his office do a very good job of notifying people in that way.
Okay, good information. I should have known that. I should probably go back and look at those documents that Dan sent out.
No, that's just all below the surface. It's no worries.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
No other lights? And just to reiterate, there is a motion on the floor for both L and M. The Item M or L is a granting a partial exemption to that property. And I just want to make sure that when Mr. Goodwilly talked about the 96,500 put on the apartment piece of that parcel, if that was what we wanted to keep it on, I'm kind of asking the maker of the motion that. So it would be a partial exempt, and the apartment would be placed at 96.5, and then an exemption for M as well. Okay. Is the second or okay with that? All right. No other questions or comments on L or M? Please vote.
One moment, please, Commissioners.
While Dan's typing, I do have a question for the church. That apartment still is occupied, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's what used to be the parsonage.
Okay.
Yeah, there is a law firm, the Forensic Trust. And about a third of the church's income comes from that.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passes six to zero.
Next, we have Items N and O, and we can also do these together. As Mike said, it's kind of the same situation. And we do have representatives here from the Nebraska Electrical Workers that may want to say a few words.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Terry Kroll, and I am one of the board members for the Building Corporation. And we did fail to apply for the exempt status for 2023. We had a change in administration and ball got dropped. We did get the certified letter. We have responded to that since then. We've turned in some information. I believe you guys have copies of that. I can answer any of those questions you may have. And we have already applied for 2024.
Okay. And just for the record, this has been exempt previously as well?
Yes. Western Electric built the building, and we believe back in the 50s. And it's been a tax exempt for as long as I've been around.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion from the board to grant the exemption? Okay, motion is to grant the exemption, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
One moment, please.
And we don't have, oh, wait a minute. Protest. We don't have need for executive session, so does the one included German. Okay. Sorry, Dan.
Oh, no problem. I know Commissioner Rogers made the motion, but who made the second?
Commissioner Morgan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Thank you all for being here this morning. Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Next, we'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections, but this item will be moved to our December 19th meeting. So we will move into the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, December 5th, 2023. And Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is our consent agenda. Items A through H. Please note in the resolution on Item D, on the third paragraph, we're missing the word Douglas. So if the maker of the motion would be okay to just noting that on the resolution? Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is recognition of the following county employee who is retiring. Larry Figs, worked for the Douglas County Health Department for 11 years. I do not believe anyone from the Health Department is here, nor Larry, but we do wish him a happy retirement and thank him for his service to Douglas County. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote. Oh, Commissioner Rogers.
I just want to, just for the record, thank Dr. Figs for the works that, work that he's done. His, the effort for him not to be here is probably intentional. So I just wanted to make sure that he know, he's personally appreciated the service over the years at the Health Department.
Thank you. Okay, please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Citizen comments. Anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Mary Ann, I'm having trouble hearing you again this morning because your microphone's not positioned properly. Once again, I want to talk about elections. You know, the state of Iowa, you know, deliver this newspaper to you about their elections. Sound like something that Nebraska should do. And it's basically about hand counting and paper trail audits, which in this state, our Secretary of State seems to think that nobody needs to know what happened in the elections and the accuracy of the vote counting, if in fact they were actually counted. Because of the software and these machines that are used, it's proprietary information. Nobody gets to look at it. Robert J. Borer has tried many times to get data, public records from every county, and been denied all the way along the line, probably because the Secretary of State himself doesn't even know. So that makes everybody in the election system in Nebraska sort of dupes because we don't really know what happened after those votes went into the machines. I was a programmer for a while. I know you can make the programs do what you want them to do. That's what a programmer does. But this is from Iowa. And the Secretary of State in Iowa is very open about it and very proud about it, very transparent, which we don't have in Nebraska. So I'll give that to Dan because that wastes my time walking over there. I want to read something that I'll, I'll give to you. That's recounted, recounted to Mr. Borer in an email about a recent experience here. And I basically replied to him when they wanted to come speak, well, good luck with that. And it had to do with a tort claims. They were listed on the agenda a few weeks back, but they were not discussed because they were on a consent agenda. That's a way of not letting the people know what, what's going on behind those closed doors. And the particular one out of two had to do with a young lady that was murdered in North Omaha, a tort claim that's out for that. The mother's name was listed and the amount asked for was listed, but there was absolutely no other information and no discussion. Citizens didn't get to find out anything about it. That's wrong. So anyway, I said, good luck with that. But maybe that, this will move the board to repent and provide an estate, we the people, a presentation before this committee. And maybe a joint And maybe a joint county, two or three different counties at the same time, to waste, not waste taxpayer money. In regards to the election, open transparency. Questions that we get to answer because we're the presenter or the introducer. And we get the five minutes. You guys maybe get to answer no more than five minutes and only once, unless we choose to call you back to the podium, like is done in these chambers. We can decide to talk to you or not talk to you according to your lawyers. That's wrong. But anyway, that's the summary of that. We go back to the early days of our founding republic when people that didn't have trust as a citizens were tarred and feathered and run out on a rail. And then we had our revolution. I know you're busy, but you probably don't realize how stirred up the American people are, particularly people that wear these kind of hats. Because we're tired of not being told the truth, we can't trust our government. And our Declaration of Independence applies to any city or county also, that when you can't trust your government, that says any form of government, quote quotes, that puts you under that. That is our right and our duty to alter, change, replace, or kick out that government and replace it with one that does serve the people.
Thank you, Larry.
Because you are.
Thank you, Larry.
You are our service, and no thanks to you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board in the chamber or on Zoom about an item not on the agenda?
Hello.
Morning.
Don Schleger, 200 Keeline Avenue. I.
Could you state your name again? I'm sorry.
Don Schleger.
Thank you.
And what I came to talk to you about was the influx of illegal immigrants at the border. Three weeks ago, I went to Washington DC with a group fair and representing the group fair and spoke to our congressional representatives. And one thing that's been talked about for years is the amount of fentanyl coming in and sex trafficking and all that kind of stuff. And that really hasn't moved the meter with people. And one thing that just happened in the last two and a half years is nearly 10 million people coming into the United States illegally. And I think people, and this is what I talked to the representatives about, was that just the magnitude of that amount of immigrants coming in to the United States is going to have a huge impact, not only financially, which we've always talked about, to the education and healthcare and welfare of citizens in the United States. But that magnitude of illegal immigration also affects our culture. And I think what people are going to start noticing, which I've noticed for quite a while, is that if there's 10 million people that came across that border, what is there, 50, 60,000 of them in Nebraska now? You know, with the majority of them in Omaha and Lincoln. And just going to places like Costco and Sam's Club and Walmart, I have, it's beyond noticeable. I was in Sam's Club last night, and I guarantee you 50% of the people in there were not Americans. I mean, the end. In the past, majority of them have been Hispanic, which they're not now. And I'm just curious, has anyone approached the council on exactly how you guys are going to deal with that amount of influx? And what, whether you folks have any plan for that or have any kind of pushback to the federal government on that amount of influx of citizens or illegals coming into your area? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda?
Morning.
Morning.
Louis Humanaus, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I'm not going to use the projector today. I remember my information. So we got some good news on the inflation rate. It's at 3.1%. And that is very, very low. I know you guys, from year to year and beyond, you are worried about economic conditions. So that's one thing that is on the bright side. I think even pundits on Fox News are saying that the economy is better than most Americans perceive it. And I hope that translates into a higher approval rating for President Joe Biden. I, excuse me. I've been trying to also figure out your situation with ARPA funding. And it's become more clear that it's a, it's a item that you need to be presenting. Nebraska, the Nebraska State recently came out with their audit report about their money that they received from the feds with ARPA funding. So if you guys could follow suit, that would be nice. And the question that I had is what part of ARPA did you receive your allocations from? You know, because of the law, it consists of multiple, multiple provisions, for example, like providing tax breaks, continuing tax breaks, continuing benefits from CARES, and so forth. Obviously, you guys don't deal, you didn't deal with those provisions of the ARPA law. You did deal with the $110 million, billion dollars. Make sure I got my zeros. $110 million from the $300 billion that were allocated in the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Every time this Board talks about this money, you just call it ARPA. I think that it would be more clear if you said that these funds are SLF RF funds from ARPA or something like that, right? They're under the guidance of the Corona state and local fiscal recovery funds. And you're getting pushback from the public about how are you using these funds? So if you are detailed, you know, you can respond to us in other items. And if you're clear and you provide more detail, then you can fight back the perception that this is not an honest Board, which I disagree with. I think you can be misguided, but I don't think you're doing anything that's going to cause you to pay back $110 million to the feds. As I'm researching this, the executive of the entity receiving the SLF RF is supposed to certify if the expenditure is in compliance with the law. That's something you can bring up that we're, it's not just the law and tush telling us that we're doing this correctly. We've already certified, or we went through the procedures in the law. So I think that you can fight back with misconceptions, against misconceptions. And one more thing, if you guys are having a private meeting, don't tell me it's a private meeting. Say it's a subcommittee meeting, okay?
Time. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda?
Ed Fogarty, 521 North 38th Street, taxpayer. I've been here before talking about clawback risk of the jail slash mental health facility. I'm here today just because I've been trying to track on this construction risk manager process. I think there's a committee meeting to be had on it, and then it's probably going to come before the full Board. Last time I suggested that you put a dissenting commissioner voice on the two seats for Commissioners on your proposed committee. There's nothing wrong with minority reports, particularly when always in front of you ought to be the risk that the whole thing could be clawed back at the end of this. Secondly, there should be a contingency plan. There's no reason why this Board couldn't have a contingency plan as the next year flows out, because you've got one year to commit the funds, then you've got two years to go spend them. I want to also thank the county attorney for a very full and complete response to a recent public records demand I made on him. And it seems to be there's unanimity. You can't build a jail under ARPA funds. But can you build the slash jail slash mental health facility? I say no. They've given you a very narrow path. And one of the nicest documents I got, which I'm going to be studying and deliver to you something next week, a more formal, probably a written thing like I sent to you before. The recent recovery plan that was sent, I don't know how long ago, closed July, closes as of July 31, 23. And in it, I find a lot of weaknesses that would not pass scrutiny by a federal court or an alerted Treasury official. The big one is that there's been no showing that we have had a problem with managing the very severely mentally ill here to date. We got a jail that they talk about being one of the best in the nation, gets awarded stuff. So this was kind of a nice-to-have project to begin, not necessary to have, and certainly not allowed by ARPA. Also, another, you didn't explain too well to the feds that this is kind of like a hotel, and the people that you might be needing to treat are really transitory. They might be federal prisoners, they might be people heading to Lincoln, where if they got lifelong serious schizophrenia or delusional disorder that comes up all the time. Your ability to address that is short term. Kind of like check in the hotel, check out of the hotel. There's, in this report to the feds, you don't talk about the fact you got over 1,400 jail space and about 1,100 annual seven-year average of inmate usage. There's a lot of holes in it. And, you know, it doesn't pass the sort of scrutiny that a Treasury official would have. I'm intending, if I can get the time to do it, deliver to you another pretty good brief-like thing like I did last time, kind of pulling all together what I say. And I really do believe maybe this idea of forming a contingency group plus the squawking voice from one, at least one commissioner, that would be Kavanaugh, who squawks well, I would say, on this at-risk construction committee would be very helpful because you've really got a full year to do what any number of professionals in the business, caregivers might tell you is needed for that 50 million, 30 of which is pretty well right now planned for a jail that may not, in my opinion, clearly does not fit under ARPA. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning.
Morning.
Matthew McPhillips. I am a security officer at the Douglas County Health Center. Just kind of came in today to see how the process works. If I have questions regarding the security officers at a new union we're trying to bring in, do I need to be on the agenda first before I can ask them?
I'm going to have our attorney speak.
Teresa, York County Attorney's Office. So the Commissioners cannot respond to items that are not on the agenda because of the Open Meetings Act.
Wonderful, awesome. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to our committees. The first is the finance, the budget report as presented, and the monthly fee report from the clerk as presented. Human resources, weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. No legislative items at this time. We do have need for an executive session for litigation, labor and contract negotiations, personnel, and security. Please.
But then we do have a issue regarding, yeah, safety or security, but no personnel.
All right, and please note.
Chair Borgeson, could we add legal advice if you wouldn't mind?
Legal advice?
Yes, please.
Okay, so strike personnel and put legal advice. And then before that motion, just note that the last meeting for 2023 is next Tuesday, December 19. And the first meeting for 2024 will be Tuesday, January 9. And again, is there a motion to go into executive session? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Chris. Motion passes six to zero.
...
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Boyle. All commissioners voting yes, we're adjourned at 10:49 a.m.